Thank you. Before we begin, if there's objection, Councilmember Swant will be excused from today's city council meeting. Not hearing or seeing objection, Councilmember Swant is indeed excused from today's city council meeting. I have a feeling Councilmember Lewis will join us soon. I just saw him.
I am here, Council President. Sorry, I was being added as a panelist as my name was being called.
Thank you, Councilmember Lewis. Okay, with that, colleagues, we do not have, moving on our agenda, we do not have any presentations today. So we'll move on to public comment. And at this time, we have two, we have our hybrid public comment. My understanding is that we have thirty-three people that are signed up remotely, and we have four peoples in chambers. So we are going to give everybody, please pay attention, particularly you, those on the line, one minute. And please, please, please push star six so we can hear you and listen for the chime that will tell you you have ten seconds. I think the most frustrating thing is having to cut people off after one minute. So with that, we will start with the in-person folks, and they will each have a minute. And then I'm going to hand it over now to Madam Clerk, who will start the directions in the recording for public comment. Go ahead, Madam Clerk. Thank you.
We are the Emerald City, the city of flowers and the city of goodwill, built on indigenous land, the traditional territory of the Coast Salis peoples. The Seattle City Council welcomes remote public comment and is eager to hear from residents of our city. If you would like to be a speaker and provide a verbal public comment, you may register two hours prior to the meeting via the Seattle City Council website. Here's some information about the public comment proceedings. Speakers are called upon in the order in which they registered on the council's website. Each speaker must call in from the phone number provided when they registered online and use the meeting ID and passcode that was emailed upon confirmation. If you did not receive an email confirmation, please check your spam or junk mail folders. A reminder, the speaker meeting ID is different from the general Listen Line meeting ID provided on the agenda. Once a speaker's name is called, the speaker's microphone will be unmuted and an automatic prompt will say, "The host would like you to unmute your microphone." That is your cue, that is your turn to speak. At that time, you must press star six. You will then hear a prompt of, "You are unmuted." Be sure your phone is unmuted on your end so that you will be heard. As a speaker, you should begin by stating your name and the item that you are addressing. A chime will sound when ten seconds are left in your allotted time, as a gentle reminder to wrap up your public comments. At the end of the allotted time, your microphone will be muted, and the next speaker registered will be called. Once speakers have completed providing public comment, please disconnect from the public comment line and join us by following the meeting via Seattle Channel Broadcast or through the Listening Line option listed on the agenda. The council reserves the right to eliminate public comment if the system is being abused, or if the process impedes the council's ability to conduct its business on behalf of residents of the city. Any offensive language that is disruptive to these proceedings, or that is not focused on an appropriate topic as specified in council rules, may lead to the speaker being muted by the presiding officer. Our hope is to provide an opportunity for productive discussions that will assist our orderly consideration of issues before the council. The public comment period is now open. And we will begin with the first speaker on the list. Please remember to press star six after you hear the prompt of, "You have been unmuted." Thank you, Seattle.
All right, our first in-person public commenter is Marguerite Richard.
I can't, well, I'm hearing the echo, but I used to be able to hear myself better than what's going on here. But, in other words, moving right along, I only have a minute with sixty seconds in it, which is terrible. I feel like that's abuse. This is Black History Month, and also human rights is on the agenda, and we're being violated. So I speak on behalf of what's going on right now with Tyree Nichols. It's happening in every systematic. It's called official oppression. That's a good term for some of you knowledgeable lawyers out there. I never heard of official oppression until they beat the hell out of him. See? You beat the hell out of us every day, and then you expect us to come down here and have any respect for you up in here? Deborah Warren has words than reparations for your people, huh? You not gonna get it before you leave? What's going on?
Our next speaker is Azhanay Smith.
Um, my name is actually Asianay Smith. And I'm coming here on behalf of the people of Seattle. And I just want everybody to know that your people are struggling, your people are hurting, your people are on drugs, your people are homeless. And I am twenty-three years old, and I am, of course, a person of color, and I am struggling. I was born and raised in the city of Seattle, Washington. And I want my people and my city to do better. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Alex Zimmerman.
My Dori dem Nazi Gestapo democracy fascist, a mob and psychopath. My name is Alex Zimmerman, and I always stand with my red sign and my yellow David Star, because I don't show my faces, sorry. I want to speak about Agenda Number One, appointing somebody from Human Rights Commission. Every time, but as I see somebody appointment for Human Health Commission, and these people here, by definition, so I ask very simple question, why Human Rights Commission don't see, so nobody show us faces when we speak for ten months right now? You are pure criminal. So last Saturday, I may complain to President, to Director of Human Rights Commission, and ask them, "What's going on? Why they don't show faces? It's a crime. You are a bandita, you are a Nazi pig, this is exactly who you are. Stand up! Clean this dirty chamber totally!"
Our next speaker is Ernie Doranfeld.
Hi, thanks for the opportunity to speak. I'm Ernie Doranfeld, president of Friends of the Market. I'd like to speak in support of Amendment One to Council Bill 120456. We support Councilmember Lewis's amendment, which removes changes to the authority of Pike Place Market Historical Commission from the bill. The commission regulates changes in design and use in the market. It does its work in public. Its members are appointed by the mayor from people who have a demonstrated sympathy with the purposes of the historic district. Some are nominated by community groups. There are members who are business owners, residents of the market, architects, and one member who is a property owner. The commission, with robust staff support from the Department of Neighborhood's Historic Preservation Program, can continue to be a success if it is supported and keeps its full authority. Please support Amendment One to Council Bill 120456, which would maintain the authority of the Pike Place Market Historical Commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Heather Pilte.
My name is Heather Peel, and I'm speaking to Council Bill 120456. And thank you to Councilmember Lewis for proposing Amendment One to this bill to remove the Market Historical District. Thank you to the Neighborhoods Committee for supporting that amendment today. The Pike Place Market Historical Commission's role was created by the Voters Initiative that saved Pike Place Market. This is the only historic district that was saved by Voters Initiative in the United States. The people who serve on the commission are extremely devoted to preserving the character of the market. As Ernie said, they have a demonstrated interest, but they are absolutely committed, they spend many hours, and they have the expertise to oversee, to oversee changes, big and small. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last in-person public speaker is A.D. Skip Knox.
Good morning. I've almost caught my breath. What's the phrase, "If it ain't broke, don't fix it"? The core area is when it's broke, and you don't know it, you can't fix it. I'm here to tell you that the relationship between the Department of Neighborhoods and the Market Historical Commission is broken, through what appears to me, and I've done a year-long study of it, to be intentional neglect, suppression, obstruction, disingenuousness, whatever it is, it's a sad state of affairs, from what I remember being a really well-run organization. I've been with the Department of Neighborhoods from that close, ever since Jim Street wrote the initiative that put the thing on a, on the city calendar. And to see what Jim Dear's left behind as its administrator for the first fourteen years of it is sad. But if, I'm sorry, I missed the clock. I appreciate your taking a look at this initiative and at this legislation, and I hope it will do pass. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now move into our public commenters that are remote. And please, remote callers, remember to press star six to unmute your phone. Our first speaker is Dimitri Potemkin. Potemkin, excuse me.
Namaste. My name is Dimitri Potemkin. I am commenting on the proposed caste ordinance. I am a Jewish American who has lived among Hindus, including my Indian native wife, for twenty-seven years. Honorable council members, like every other immigrant community, Hindus have come to America to shed the oppressive social structures of their home countries and to start fresh with the opportunities that America provides. I know them personally. They left caste consciousness behind, and this caste legislation will reintroduce it in their new homeland. We fear that at a time when Hindu phobia is on the rise in the US, the Councilwoman Savant's caste legislation will further endanger the Hindu diaspora by designating them as a suspect class. Furthermore, we fear that corporations seeking to avoid caste-related controversies may simply stop considering Hindus for employment. This could result in the loss of livelihoods for many families. For these reasons, I implore the council to, if not reject the caste legislation immediately, to at least table it pending further study. Thank you for your kind attention.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Arul, last initial P.
Good afternoon, council members. I'm Arul. I'm a writer and a technologist. I would like to urge the city council to ban caste discrimination so that we have a legal option to ask for justice. Caste transcends across South Asian religions in the South Asia. Though caste-based discrimination is now illegal in India, it impacts still far-reaching and can manifest in every aspect of life. With growing Indian and South Asian diaspora in the US, the system has been brought into a new continent. I have seen caste system being practiced in many public spaces in, under the pretext of cultural context. Discrimination is practiced in every aspect, from food to festival to workplace. What makes the popular notion in the West, Indians are vegetarians, while seventy percent of the Indians eat meat? This is the privileged population who grabbed the chance to settle in the West, created the notion, and that is the baseline of discrimination based on food. I strongly urge the city council to take the lead in this human rights issue and pass the ordinance making caste discrimination illegal. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Manmeet Singh.
Good afternoon, city council. Good afternoon, city council members. My name is Manmeet, and I'm a caste privileged person here to voice my support for the addition of caste as a protected category and the banning of caste discrimination. Previously, I was involved with the advocacy process at the California State University that went on to become the largest all-year public university to ban caste discrimination, despite a small amount of backlash that we received from very vocal, from very vocal folks operating from fragility. Our university stood firm in its commitment to equity and justice, and I ask you to do this thing. Adding caste as a protected category is an additive approach. It's an additive layer of protection to ensure civil rights. It does not take away from existing protections to any religious or ethnic group. It doesn't take away from anyone nor lead to discrimination for anyone. It's merely adding protections against, against discrimination on the basis of caste. And I urge you to also join us in this movement as we make history and ban caste discrimination.
Thank you. Our next speaker is first initial G, last name Kaur, K-A-U-R, Kaur.
My name is G. Kaur. I'm a Sikh and caste-privileged person, and I'm jock speaking from the University of California system. And I'm urging council members to join UC Davis, the California State Universities, and Brown Universities and more to vote protection for caste-based discrimination and to best, to ban caste-based discrimination in Seattle, which has been normalized in India and now in neighborhood corporations, universities of the US, to the point where caste-privileged people feel it is okay to exclude, silence, dock, and murder caste-oppressed people or those associated with caste-oppressed people. According to a survey, caste in the United States by Equity Labs, one in three Dalit students reported experiencing discrimination during the course of their education. Forty-one percent of Dalit students surveyed reported facing discrimination in educational institutions in the diaspora. Only three percent of upper caste respondents reported the same. It's important that we protect folks that are feeling, that have injustices against them. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Suresh Krishnamurthy.
The proposed ordinance on caste by Councilmember Shama Savant does not specify how a caste is to be determined. I'd like to offer a reference, Castes of East Bengal by Sir Herbert Hope Reisley, published in eighteen ninety-one, and I quote, "Hundreds of names of caste clans or families have been unavoidably relegated to the unknown group because no one could say what the main caste they belong to. If we take a series of castes in Bengal, Bihar, and northwestern provinces, and arrange them in the order of the average racial index, so that the castes with the finest nose shall be at the top, and that with the coarsest at the bottom of the list, it will be found that this order substantially corresponds with the accepted order of social precedence. The casteless tribes, Khols, Korwas, Mundas, and the like occupy the lowest place in both series. Then come the vermin-eating Mushahars and the leather-dressing Chamar, the Fisher-caste of Baudy, Paine. I urge the city council of Seattle to immediately embark on our anthropometric exercise to classify the caste status of all the people of South Asian origin."
Thank you. Our next speaker is Howard Gale.
Good afternoon. Howard Gale with SeattleStop.org. As I've repeatedly noted over the last thirteen months, in January of twenty twenty-two, a man running naked on Beacon Hill, experiencing a severe behavioral health crisis, was chased by Seattle police, had a canine set upon him attacking his naked crotch, and was then shot to death by the Seattle police. Also, as I've repeatedly noted, the council has apparently cared so little for this man's death that you have still not provided any oversight on the fact that our entire police accountability system has buried this case. We still do not know the outcome of any investigation, we still have no accountability. What could possibly account for the lack of empathy and action for this police killing in twenty twenty-two, but such public and proactive action around the police running over and killing Janavi Kundula two weeks ago? Is it that Janavi is deemed innocent, but a man in behavioral health crisis is deemed guilty of bringing about his own murder? Which is precisely what our police accountability system has determined with past similar cases, in which it's a twisted accounting of events that a community police commissioner provided just last week with no pushback and no counter-narrative.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Chetana Stokes.
Hi, my name is Chetna Stokes. And I urge the council to vote against the caste ordinance. I am a concerned Hindu resident. I work in higher education, and I'd just like to point out a couple of facts that you should know. The CSU policy, as cited in evidence and precedents, has already been resulted in a lawsuit being filed against that university. Similarly, Brown University, in enacting a similar rule, admitted that existing laws are sufficient to handle discrimination based on caste. Brandeis University has not recorded a single case of caste-based discrimination in the three years since their caste was added as a protected category on the campus. I would like to point out that these facts directly contradict the exaggerating claims that caste-based discrimination is widespread or rampant. I do feel that this ordinance, if passed, will bring more racist views towards South Asians. And I'd just like to thank you for your time. And again, I would like you all to vote no against this caste.
Our next speaker is Suri Ravi.
Let's see, I don't, uh, looking for the tile. I see Mr. Ravi is there. Sir, push star six.
We can move on and try back if you'd like.
Let's come back to Mr. Ravi. Thank you.
The next speaker will be Peta Prasad.
Hi, um, my name, hi, my name is Peta. I am a South Asian person of color, a minority immigrant woman. I have always valued Seattle as a place that celebrates diversity. So today, I'm here to express my shock that you guys would be considering a deeply racist and discriminatory ordinance introduced by Councilwoman Savant to add caste as a protected category. Please note caste is a deeply racist and colonial trope, wrote in the worst excesses of the eighteenth and nineteenth century, when it was believed that white men carried the burden to civilize as brown savages. Seattle, don't take on that role today and tell us that South Asians are uniquely genetically inclined to discriminate or have more hierarchy than every other group in humankind. Disregard the flawed data from Equality Labs, a hate group that has openly stated its goal is to demolish Hinduism. That's their right as a private group, but not something the city should be mainstreaming. Today, you guys got a letter from a group of Dalit and Bahujan South Asians, who also...
Thank you. We'll try Suri Ravi one more time. Suri Ravi.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And I should remind everybody again, please, it's one minute, and you have a ten-second reminder. And many of the callers that are calling in are about a matter that's not on today's agenda. However, we're going to go ahead and hear work, public comment. It's not even on the introduction referral calendar. But let's, let's continue with the public comment.
All right. Suri, are you there? Nope, not present now. Okay, we're going to move on to Mira, last initial P. Mira?
I see she's...
Hi, I'm, I'm here. Hi, I'm a caste-riddled tech worker at a big corporation here in Seattle. I urge all council members to vote yes on the ordinance proposed by Councilmember Shama Savant to ban caste-based discrimination in the city of Seattle. Across the nation, institutions are adding caste into their anti-discrimination policy to further equity. Brown University recently added caste into their anti-discrimination policy. Cal State East Bay passed a resolution through their academic senate. UC Davis added caste as well in their policy. And the Cal State Student Association, that officially represents over half a million students across California, also unanimously passed a resolution in support of adding caste as a protected category. Major universities are taking this vital action to protect caste-oppressed people because caste-based discrimination does exist, so protections are absolutely necessary. This is a human rights issue, so as Democrats, the council must vote yes. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Shaheera, and the last initial is K. Shaheera K.
Good afternoon, council members. I am a Sikh Dalit caste-oppressed woman with Equality Labs. I want to break down caste. caste is a system of exclusion and oppression that affects over one billion people across the world. caste determines social status and spiritual purity. We have seen evidence-based research in the US that caste-oppressed, caste-oppressed groups continue to face extreme injustices. caste, which is analogous to race, was created in order to exploit. We have seen again and again in the diaspora that these injustices persist. Therefore, protections for caste-oppressed folks must be implemented in Seattle. My family and I have experienced these injustices, being called slurs by Juts, who are the dominant caste Punjabi groups throughout the US. A legal ban on caste discrimination will protect me, my family, and caste-oppressed folks for generations to come. I urge all council members to vote yes on the ordinance proposed by Councilmember Shama Savant to ban discrimination in Seattle. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Vidula Vajramushthi. Vidula?
Hello? Vidula, you need to speak up. Let's start you again. We can't, you gotta speak up. As a former Microsoft employee and spouse of a current Amazon employee, I'm calling the city of Seattle to oppose the introduction of this caste ordinance. We have a motto, "If it ain't broken, don't fix it." If someone does experience discrimination, they must use the existing protections in the law of race, gender, national origin, et cetera. Race for caste is actually very difficult to prove for all those who are calling themselves Dalit or, you know, experience this. There is no way in the court of law to prove that. So how are you planning to do this? What hierarchy will be assigned for possible discrimination in the case of the Christian Dalits versus Muslim Dalits? I implore the city of South of Seattle to use the taxpayer money wisely on issues that are true relative to taxpayers, such as mental health and gender.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Vinkat with the last initial S. Vinkat? Vinkat?
So I see they're unmuted, so they're there.
Hi, this is Vinkat. I work in a tech, I work in a tech company. So here, I, I argue everyone to vote as to caste discrimination, but introduced by Shama. So here, I do see so many groups are being formed, and based on the cost, and, you know, in the companies, the promotions, whatever, is going based on the cost funding. So even I personally, I familiarized with the asking cost in the company, whether you from, which community you belong. So everything is going through community only. So I request everyone to, you know, vote as to this caste discrimination, and so my community will help. Get help. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Rajeshwaray Goboli.
Hello, namaste. My name is Rajeshwaray, and I'm against the caste ordinance because this ordinance is discrimination in itself. Why is a one-person minority committee being singled out when that committee has always given back in multiple fold to whichever country they have lived in? And the country where they come from has given refuge to every other community of the world with respect and kindness. My humble appeal to the conscientious among you is to at least do some due diligence on the subject, instead of believing a disturbingly faulty survey of Equality Labs. These surveys are no better than the colonizers who created this fake false line of caste. I'm proud to belong to a community that follows a most admirable ideology, one that sees the divinity in all beings, not just humans. Does it make sense then, that such an ideology will support any kind of discrimination at all? Please recognize the powers that wish to divide and hurt the one community that has always contributed significantly to the well-being of this country. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Robin Taylor.
Hello, my name is Robin Taylor. I urge the city of Seattle to vote no to the caste ordinance. This is a racist act against the Hindu community. As a black American Hindu myself, I feel this is an aggressive push to attack the Hindu community as a whole. In America, the caste system holds no basis, as every man is equal under God per the US Constitution. This is a blatant singling out of a minority based on unsubstantiated claims. This should not be taken lightly. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Nava Kiran Dhandhu.
My name is Nava Kiran. I support the ordinance that the ban of caste system. I would like to quickly discuss four incidents that happened in four months of time since I arrived to the US. In the past case, when I'm opening in the bank statement, in the Bank of America, one guy from North, North India suddenly come and ask, "You have lot of reservations in the value to come to you." It's very terrible to me. And second thing is, when I was in the party, I could hear one of my, there are the discussions, we are in upper caste and you are in the lower caste, and there are discussions happening. I was not involving in the, in the discussion, but I could see there is some caste-based arguments that we are low and we are high. And another thing, when I was looking for the opportunities, many people who came recently, the students especially, they are grouping with the caste-based system. And one of the speaker of... And one of the speaker recently said that because of, uh, too, too close, I'm there, but I'm proud to say I'm Hindu. Even I've never realized, I mean, said my religion as a Hindu, even though they are discriminating on the name of the caste.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Radhika Marwaha. Radhika?
Hi, uh, I'm a dominant caste Hindu and Sikh graduate student, and I've witnessed several instances of caste bigotry and discrimination against my caste-oppressed peers in classrooms, student organizations, housing situations, and more. Um, casteism is a queer and gender justice issue. It's a feminist issue, a workers' rights issue, you know, an anti-racist and indigenous rights issue. And so none of us can be truly free until everyone is free. And moving forward with caste protections within the city of Seattle is one step forward in seeking collective justice against oppression. So please don't let those expressing like fragility, you know, detract from that, um, or even attack Dalit feminist scholarship. Please vote yes on this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Robert Messina.
Thank you. Thank you, uh, City Council. My name is, uh, Bob Messina, Robert Messina. I want to support the amended Council Bill one-two-zero-four-five-six, which includes Councilmember Lewis's amendment that exempts and removes the Pike Place Market Historical Commission from the bill. The governance by the Pike Place Market Historical Commission, the PDA Council, and the PDA itself have worked successfully over the decades to keep the market attractive, historic, and successful. And this includes open public meetings with public comment. The Market Historical Commission was involved with the implementation of the voter-approved two thousand and eight Pike Place Market renovation bond issue, as well as the two thousand and fifteen construction of the new market front building. The Market Historical Commission deals with large-scale proposals as well as small-scale ones, like the size of a vendor's sign. I support keeping the market commission whole. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Shanti Raghavan. Shanti?
I see Mr. Raghavan's tile is up there. It's star six. There you go.
This is Shanti. Um, uh, this, this caste system ordinance is discriminatory, racist, and actually ridiculous. This was banned fifty years ago by the government of India, and it's a non-issue. It doesn't exist in USA. Our children are all married to Americans, so who's, what caste do they belong to? Much less what are their children's caste? There is nothing like caste here. That's one thing, and already laws exist here protecting the employees, and I think we should make sure these are enforced. And I think that's all I have to say. I'm absolutely against, uh, this ordinance. So my answer is no. Please ban it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Our next speaker is Christine Vaughn. Christine, press star six possibly?
Uh, she, Christina was right. Oh, there you go. She's back. Christine?
Thank you. Yes, this is Christine Vaughn. And I want to thank Councilmember Lewis for introducing an amendment to Council Bill one-two-zero-four-five-six that takes the Historical Commission out of the legislation, and thanks to the committee that unanimously approved it. I hope the full City Council will see the wisdom and approve it as well. I also hope that whoever oversees the Department of Neighborhoods will look into why the statement of commitment to racial equity, that City Council by ordinance requires the added to the commission guidelines in twenty fifteen, and that the commission subsequently drafted, approved, and sent to the Department of Neighborhoods literally years ago, is still not finalized and added to the guidelines as requested. I look forward with hope to your vote today for passing CB one-two-zero-four-five-six with the amendment offered by Councilmember Lewis. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Enion with the last initial N. Enion?
Hi, I am a dominant caste Hindu person, um, from a Southern California community with lots of family in Seattle working in tech. I graduated from university just last year. Um, this university has a large South Asian international and South Asian diaspora population. And while on campus, I witnessed hurtful instances of caste discrimination multiple different times. Once at an event for South Asian students, before other students decided they wanted to talk or even associate with other people, they tried to figure out caste backgrounds first. When they got to me, I asked them why they cared. I don't believe people should decide their friends, colleagues, and coworkers based on caste. When they further pressed me and outright asked what my background was and asked if I was Brahmin or the highest caste, so-called caste, I told them that my background didn't matter and that it shouldn't matter at all. They decided this was a ground to no longer talk to me and the other people who were identifying with lower, so-called lower caste. This needs to be added as a protection all around our country, and we need to start in Seattle. Please. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Khan Hassan.
Khan, star six. To unmute?
Hello?
Yep, you're on.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon. This is Khan Hassan. I am a human rights activist and a tech worker, and I urge all council members to vote yes on this caste ordinance. caste is a crime against humanity. caste is a blood on our society. It's shame, it's practice in twenty-first century in Seattle. Thank you. Have a nice day.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sanjay Sisail. Sanjay, you might need to press star six.
Uh, Sanjay's tile. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is, hi, my name is Sanjay. Yes, I'm, I'm an caste-oppressed community of Indian origin. I support adding caste to discrimination ordinance in Seattle. This is a human rights issue. There are biases, exclusions, and denying of opportunities at workplace based on caste. I request you to add caste in discrimination policy so that people get protection. Uh, I want to quote here, no one is free until everyone is free. I, so I urge all council members to say yes and add caste as protected category. Thank you. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Anil Kamblee. Anil?
Uh, Anil? Anil?
Hi, uh, I'm Anil. Uh, I'm a senior developer at a tech company in Seattle. I urge all council members to vote yes on the ordinance proposed by Councilmember Shama Savan to ban caste-based discrimination in Seattle City. I'm thankful for providing a platform for marginalized and underrepresented minorities to tell their life experiences. Minorities and Dalits in particular in Seattle are outnumbered by the privileged people by more than ninety percent as per a survey in, in two thousand and three. So that's where I, I believe the voice of the underrepresented people needs to be heard. There is very large scope for harassment and retaliation for just speaking out their minds. Um, I have my personal experience when in my first job itself, my seniors spoke in my face about how bad the quality of talent coming from the underrepresented minorities are. So there are many such experiences, but I do urge all the Democrats to vote yes.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Monty with the last name initial K. Monty K.
Hello, council members. My name is Monty, and I urge you to vote yes on this ordinance to ban caste discrimination. caste discrimination is rampant in the Sikh religion in the United States. I have faced discrimination at the hands of upper caste Sikhs myself. I was dating a girl from this Jat Sikh community in California, and we were moving towards marriage. When her parents found out that I'm a lower caste Ravidaasiya Sikh, they refused to even talk to me. They called me slurs and abused and threatened their own daughter for bringing dishonor to their Sikh family for dating, in their words, a polluted, lower caste boy. caste discrimination in Sikhs is evident from the fact that there are separate Sikh temples, also called Guru Dwara, for the upper caste Jat Sikhs and lower caste Ravidaasiya Sikhs. Councilmembers, the lower caste Ravidaasiya Sikhs face segregation and discrimination in the Sikh temples done by upper caste Sikhs, so they are forced to have their own temples. You can see them in California, Texas, and New York. Please don't let the opponents of this bill confuse you by thinking this caste ordinance is against Hinduism. Sikhs are routinely-
Thank you. Our next speaker is Swati Mishram.
Swati, star six. There you go.
Hello, my name is Swati Mishram from Michigan. I work in IT company, and I did face discrimination on multiple occasions, and I support the ban of caste system. My personal experience at my workplace when my coworker called me out annoying that I belong to a lower caste, saying that because of people like me, her sister did not got admission in, uh, MEBS. So I don't want this to impose, uh, caste-based discriminations on my children. Therefore, I urge the council to ban the caste-based discrimination in Seattle City. Thank you. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Avana Pal. Avana? And you may need to press star six.
Hi. Hi, my name is Avana, and I'm an IT professional from a Buddhist faith and caste-oppressed community, and stand with Equality Labs and Shama Savan to ban caste-based discrimination in Seattle. In my first week of job, our team got together in person at the workplace, and just on the second day of meeting in person with the team, this peer of mine asked me, are you from North India? Explaining how they are from this upper caste, so-called upper caste from North India, without me even asking about it. Since my last name does not reveal any caste-specific identity, the next question was, is this your last name or something from your dad's or husband's side? Still not being able to figure out what was intended to be found, that is the caste, the next blunt question came, what caste do you belong to? This is strictly caste-based discrimination practice, as this is the very first information that is gathered to now be prejudiced about how to associate with this person going forward. So I vote yes to ban caste-based discrimination in, in Seattle. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Dukie Ram.
Hi, I'm, hi, um, I'm a software professional working in the United States for last seventeen years. And, uh, on my very first job, when I joined in here, uh, through my offshore company, um, my, my immediate boss ridiculed me, and around me, he used to call derogatory name to lower caste people very often, and he used to watch my face, uh, just to guess what would, how would I react? Uh, just to kind of figure out, okay, what community I belong to. I, I belong to Buddhist community, uh, very peace-loving. And, uh, this is not the only incidence. I've seen caste discrimination rampantly in the United States. This is a very serious issue. caste is a very, very ingrained part of Indian culture. Anywhere Indians go, particularly the higher caste Indians, they, they, they make sure that, okay, they carry the caste discrimination. So I have lost tremendous, many, many opportunities, and someone really needs to look into this closely. I really urge, uh, City Council to vote yes for banning the caste discrimination and make this, uh, uh, country even more, uh, well-
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ellis Smith.
Hello?
Hello?
Um, hi, hello. Uh, I'm an upper caste, uh, uh, Ayar, Tamil Ayar Brahmin living in the United States, and I have faced caste discrimination. Um, I have been made fun of the way I speak, the way I dress, and, uh, I, I, I truly, uh, don't think that any social situation or bad behavior can explain, uh, all this nonsense that is going on. And, uh, I would urge to vote no. And, uh, please don't cite bad behavior in social situations as a, as a means to legislate against people. So it is not about higher caste or lower caste or whatever the names that you guys use. Uh, and don't bring things from India over here. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last speaker today is Karthik Arumagam. Karthik? And you may need to press star six.
Hello? Star six?
Yes, yes.
Good.
Hello. Yeah, uh, yeah, thank you for the opportunity. I'm Karthik, and I urge all the council members to vote yes on the ordinance proposed by Councilmember Shama Savan to ban caste-based discrimination in Seattle City. I urge all council members to outlaw caste-based discrimination, thus making the city, the Seattle, the first city in the country to do this. This will be a historic win for all the caste-oppressed people in America. Thank you.